Good afternoon. Everybody's awake at least, so we know we can start. Madam Clerk, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Taylor. Ms. Herbert.
Here.
Dr. Bustles.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Present.
Mayor Rickaman.
Here.
Thank you.
Would y'all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its strength, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Reverend McDowell, our Honorable Mayor pro tem, would you mind taking care of the invocation for us?
Yes, sir. Gracious and eternal Creator, for your loving kindness, for your tender mercies that showers upon us each and every day, for this city of ours that continues to mushroom itself with nutrients of grace and mercy, we pray, Lord, that in your own way, you might touch us, sensitize us, and yet allow us to feel and sense each other's presence in this room. Allow us, as we sit here today, to hear, to listen, and to act upon things that are necessary for the advancement of our city. We ask it, we claim it, in the Creator's name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Move for adoption of the agenda. I would like to move for the agenda to be adopted, other than we're deferring Item 18, Ordinance 2022-047, and Item 23, which is the CPAC. Item 20, Resolution 2022-038, has been withdrawn. With that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
So may.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions, questions? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye. At this point, we have public input on any agenda items. There is input for general discussion or comments at the end of the agenda, but this is for any item that is on there. Is there anybody here that would like to speak at this time? Ms. Wiley?
Good morning.
We're doing great, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You know, we got two on Belt Line that need the roads to go over the train track. One on Belt Line where I live, and the other one down Belt Line and Main Street. And it's a traffic problem, too. We want to make sure y'all put that in there.
Long-term, those sections are part of our safety program that we're working on right now with Senator Harpoulian and at the federal level to improve, and that's going to improve the safety around the crossings. But the volume at that intersection doesn't come for a route, but you will be seeing some improvements.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am, it's part of it. And I'll share with you the overall safety plan, because it stretches all. As you know, we have 55 crossings, over 55 crossings in our community.
Yeah, because just like we got the school in our neighborhood, they'd be crossing up over in that track, you know.
I will share that information with you.
Burton Park, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for bringing that up. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on an item on the agenda? Hearing none. I would move that we approve the minutes
second
from March 8th, 15th, and 19th?
April 9th.
Is there any discussion, questions? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Starting today's agenda with a few presentations, the first being the National Bike Month and Bicycle Safety Month Proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor.
So as we celebrate several things this month, one more is the National Bike Month and Bike Safety Month. And I'll read this proclamation and then present it. The bicycle is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation. Many Colombians will experience the joys of bicycling during the month of May through participation in education programs, races, commuting events, trail workdays, helmet protection activities, charity events, or just getting out and enjoying our community on their bike. The Palmetto Trail attracts trail users each year from around the state, providing economic, health, and scenic benefits to the citizens of South Carolina and the Southeast. Whereas these bicycling activities, attractions, have great potential to have a positive impact on Columbia's economy, tourism, industry, and stimulate economic development by making the city attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy spending times outdoors and leading healthy lifestyles. Creating bicycle-friendly communities has shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, quality of life, boost community spirit to improve traffic safety, and to reduce pollution and congestion. So May has been declared National Bike Month. So again, in 2022, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor of the City of Columbia, along with my fellow members of City Council, do by here recognize the month of May 2022 as National Bike and Bike Safety Month, and the week of May 16th through the 22nd of 2022 as Bike to Work Week. And so all of you, I know Ms. Herbert's going to bike herself to work, because she was talking about it the other day, and some of us will attempt to bike to work. Bike Work Week Day will be May 20th. So we look forward to seeing all of you out on your bikes around town, making it to work. Who will be here to receive this? Do we have anybody from the BPAC? I have a feeling they're going to see who uses it. That's why she's making sure she knows whose numbers are on there. But I will say for Bike Week, I know there's been a lot of discussions. I just spoke to a reporter today about, but we have Calhoun Street Project is finished in design and is going to be let this summer for its bid. I also know that the Blossom Street is part of the Blossom Street Bridge renovations. The walk-by bike path there is also being administered. So we're picking them off slowly but surely. And hopefully, as we continue to see infrastructure money and other opportunities for funding, we'd be able to leverage to close the loop, not only our greenways, but finish up the bike-walk path program that was adopted. I think the process started in 2010, if I believe, and then was officially adopted '17, I believe. So we're not there yet, but we're making progress. And I look forward to seeing all of y'all out on May 20th on your bikes.
Yeah, right.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, no, don't worry, Howard, they got you. They got one with two baskets on it for you. And three wheels.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam City Manager, you prepare for me to move forward to the next one?
I'll read it for the record, Mayor. The item is number three, and it is the National Historic Preservation Month Proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman. And a note, Mayor Rickaman, the 2022 Mabel Payne Historic Preservation Award is to Ms. Amy Moore, the Principal Planner for the Planning and Development Services Department.
I was going to mention that afterwards, but you beat me to the punch there. That's all right. We'll make sure we present this proclamation to Ms. Moore.
Pardon me, actually, we have, I am presenting the award winner.
You didn't win it?
I did not win it this year.
You've won it in the past, haven't you?
I've won it, but it was not the city award. It was Historic Preservation Award, that's why.
You know what, Ms. Moore, we're going to let you go first, since you...
Oh, okay. All right, I will be happy to do that. Delighted to. So if you haven't already gathered, I'm Amy Moore, Preservation Planner with the City of Columbia.
And not the winner of the Mabel Payne Award.
And not the winner of the Mabel Payne Award. But nationwide, people use May as a month to celebrate historic preservation and what it can do in their communities, strengthening neighborhoods, conserving resources, bolstering economic development and tourism, and preserving a sense of place and history. Here in Columbia, our events this month include virtual bike rides in historic districts, children's crafts, which can be found online, a modern architectural tour on Main Street, and a joint research roundtable with Historic Columbia, who I might add is celebrating their 60th birthday this year. Each year, as part of Preservation Month, we give out the Mabel Payne Award. Mabel was a city employee whose work in the 1950s documenting and presenting historic structures laid the foundation for the preservation of so much of what still exists today. Buildings on Main Street, the Vista, Robert Mills District, our historic neighborhoods, and so many others. All of these are pivotal to the character of Columbia and are still with us only through the cumulative efforts of very many people. So our award winners may work behind the scenes, or they may be front and center, but their work has had significant impact on Columbia and its historic built environment through their outstanding efforts in education, leadership, conservation, or stewardship of the city's historic resources. And this year, I'm very pleased to announce our award recipient for conservation and stewardship is Richard Bertsch, a local developer whose rehabilitation projects are many and varied. They include 701 Whaley, the Palmetto Compress Warehouse, buildings in Five Points, mill houses in the Granby Mill District, and others. Buildings which run the gamut of 2,000 square feet to well over 300,000 square feet. Richard looks at a historic building, often one which is failing or regarded as undevelopable. He sees amazing possibilities, and then he works harder than almost anybody I know to make that happen. Richard has been described as dedicated, persevering, detail-oriented, a visionary, a perfectionist, somewhere between crazy and brilliant, and a leader who inspires others, all of which I can attest to, because it's been my pleasure and privilege to work with him on projects over the years. He is a guy who puts his money where his mouth is. And time and time again, it's the City of Columbia who is the richer for it. Please join me in thanking Richard for his decades of work revitalizing historic buildings and giving them new life and energy. And that is for you.
Thank you.
And you are welcome to say it.
Amy would have been a much better choice. I will say that, and some of you guys are heavily involved in historic preservation as well. You know, as a person who loves old buildings, it's a challenge to make them economically viable. I think if more people could see that they can be economically viable, we'd have much fewer arguments and fights on our hands when it comes to trying to preserve something. Additionally, you know, every old building owner is just generally a small fraction of that building's timeline. So we're caretakers. We're trying to leave that property, that building, that structure, a little bit better than we found it for the next generation. And I think that all goes back to creating, you know, whether it's architecture, engineering, memories of how that building got used. But that's what helps us create a sense of place for this community. So I thank you for this award, and it means a lot to me. Please help join in the effort to save as much fabric as we can.
Well, that was the perfect segue for us to go to the next proclamation. You know, as May has been declared National Preservation Month, and has been since 1973, so again, here in 2022, the City of Columbia adopted its first preservation ordinance in 1963 and created its first historic districts in 1964. Historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. Historic preservation has been established in cities across the nation as an effective tool for economic and sustainable development, tourism promotion, community revitalization, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. It is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by so many dedicated individuals in helping preserve the tangible aspects of heritage that have shaped us as a community. Historic preservation is the key to protecting the unique character and viability of City of Columbia. Now, therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, the Mayor of City of Columbia, South Carolina, along with the fellow members of City Council, do hereby proclaim the city honors and recognizes the month of May of 2022 as National Preservation Month. And I have a proclamation, Amy and the staff, if y'all will all come up.
Okay, our next item, Item 4, the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor.
So earlier today, I had the opportunity to go to the State House and support our fellow council member, Dr. Aditya Bustles, as she received a proclamation from our delegation proclaiming Asian American and being the first Asian American Pacific Islander elected to public office in South Carolina. And she was recognized on the House floor by our delegation, and it was great to be there, and she was supported by several folks from the business community. But with that, I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Bustles to take it along with some of the folks from the community that are here on behalf of the Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. So, and they're abbreviating this, so when I say the AAPI population is comprised over 40 different ethnic subgroups and are expected to more than double by 51 million in 2060. There are more than 555,000 Asian-owned businesses in the United States. That's roughly one out of every 10 of all businesses. There are more than 5,100 Native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander-owned businesses in the United States, counting for about one out of every 100 businesses. The Asian American Pacific Islanders community is made up of culturally linguistic, diverse people representing populations from many countries and islands who are setting high standards of achievement and sharing with us their unique ideas, talents for art, science, economic development. And whereas, South Carolina is the home of over 94,000 Asian American and Pacific Islanders who contribute greatly to our economy, our diversity, and the well-being of our community. So whereas, the month of May has been chosen to observe Asian American and Pacific Islanders' heritage for many reasons, including to commemorate the first Japanese immigrants who came to the United States in May of 1843, as well as to mark the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in May of 1869, which involved the strenuous labor of many Chinese and Pacific immigrants. Therefore, I, the Mayor of Columbia, and the City Council, do by proclaim May 2022 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in recognition of the history of achievement of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in the United States. And with that, I would love to invite the folks from the business community and Dr. Bustles up to receive this proclamation.
Yeah, and I'll just take a quick point of personal privilege and acknowledge that we have members of the media, we have business owners, we have our Mayor's Fellow, we have a member of CPD. I'm forever thankful for all of your hard work, and I hope that all of you will join me this month in visiting Asian American businesses in the city, learning a little bit more about the Asian American community in Columbia, because we are here, and just learn a little bit more about the diversity and the rich traditions that so many immigrants bring into this country to achieve the American dream. So I hope the folks that are in the audience will come join us for a photo.
How did you leave the camera running? That'll be the lead story on WLTX tonight.
It should be. Thank you.
And then last but not least, May might be the most popular month in the U.S. We have the 2022 Small Business Week Proclamation. As you know, small businesses are a backbone of our community throughout and has been historically. We celebrated several businesses the other day on Main Street, and we have a lot of events kicking off. But we have a proclamation, you know, that for more than 50 years, the U.S. Small Business Administration has celebrated National Small Business Week. And so what I would encourage for everyone is to support all our small businesses. If it's up the North Main Corridor or down South Belt Line, if it's out in the Northeast, Spears Creek, or if it's down Garner's Ferry, or right here down in the Vista, Five Points. Every corridor of our community has a lot of small businesses. So take the opportunity today to support those small businesses. If you need accounting services, call a small firm. If you need real estate, call an agent. There's so many people out there. And of course, all our great restaurants, if you're on River Road, go by and see our folks at the Food Gallery. If you're down in the Vista, go by and stop in and look at the hundreds of small restaurants up and down from historic restaurants like Motor Supply, but also the Ramen House that's located there. Go down to Five Points and try some Japanese food at the Bento Box. There's so many opportunities for you to support small businesses. So please take the opportunity to do it. And I don't know who will be here to accept this. Dion, you want to accept the Small Business Week Proclamation? He's one of our highlighted businesses, and our staff's here, Ebony and others. This is Dion, Sunday 7. One of our great producers and idea guy. I've had the best time getting to know Dion, and I'm excited that he's one of our five businesses that are being highlighted as part of our Small Business Week. Dion, why don't you come on up? Bless him. With that, we can move to the Consent Agenda.
Of Consent Agenda Items 6 through 13 for Council's consideration. Of Consent Agenda items six through thirteen for council's consideration.
I have a motion, is there a second? Any discussion, questions, concerns, highlights? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving into a period of ordinances, first reading, item fourteen, ordinance number two thousand twenty-two zero one three, granting an encroachment to Mungo Homes Property LLC and East Fair Development LLC for the use of the right-of-way areas of the five hundred block of East Fair Drive, the six hundred block of Legacy Park Court, and fourteen hundred block of Sandra Drive adjacent to six thirty-five, six thirty-six, and six fifty-two Legacy Park Court.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, concern, or discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Taylor. Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Item fifteen, ordinance number two thousand twenty-two zero three four, authorizing the city manager to execute a reinstatement and Seventeenth Amendment to the purchase agreement between the City of Columbia and Bright Myers Two Thousand One LLC for the sale of five point nine seven acres, the Capital City Stadium.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any discussion? Any concern, comments? Not hearing none or seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Item sixteen, ordinance number two thousand twenty-two zero three five, amending the nineteen ninety-eight Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter Fifteen, Parks and Recreation, Section Fifteen One, prohibited acts in the parks regarding item eight, alcohol.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Part of why we're doing this is that events like Gervais Street Bridge aren't allowed to serve alcohol on our side of the street without changing this, so they have to push everything to West Columbia.
It's a long walk.
Yeah, all of these, but this, all of this runs through the Police Department and DOR, so it's not like somebody can just show up to one of our public parks and declare that they're having a party. So just wanna make everybody clear that there's, there's guidelines and definitions around this. So with that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Taylor. Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Item seventeen, ordinance number two thousand twenty-two zero three six, granting an encroachment to Lee and Maple LLC for the use of the right-of-way area of the twenty-seven hundred block of Lee Street for the installation and maintenance of four on-street parking spaces, two brick columns.
Second.
There's been a motion, there's been a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Taylor. Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Item eighteen is deferred, moving into a period of resolutions. Item nineteen, resolution number R two thousand twenty-two zero three seven, approval for release and abandonment of a portion of an existing City of Columbia sanitary sewer easement for the CIP Project Number SS seven five seven and CIP Project Number SS seven two six one. Alate Catherine.
Is there a motion? I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions, discussions? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Taylor. Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Item twenty was withdrawn. We have one event resolution, resolution number R two thousand twenty-two zero three three, authorizing consumption of beer and wine beverages only at the Main Street Latin Festival in the thirteen hundred and fourteen hundred blocks of Main Street and the eastern half block of the eleven hundred block of Washington Street on August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, with a rain date contingency of September third, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Taylor. Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Moving into a period of appointments, and Ashley, he is here to assist several appointments today, the first being item twenty-two, the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee.
First of all, I'd like to thank council for working together to coming up with a list that I could bring forth so that we, we had some agreement across the board. So for accommodations, my motion is to reappoint Stevenson, Langley, Sims, and Cook, and new appointees being Bullard, Dio, and.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a, a motion and a second? Is there any discussions or concerns? Not hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mr. Taylor. Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next appointment is item twenty-four, the Adventure Children's Museum, and I think we have our.
I have a motion to appoint Dr. Bussles to the Adventure Board. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
So we're, we moved on to item twenty-four?
Yes, ma'am, twenty-three was deferred.
Thank you.
Sorry, let me make that clear.
Sorry, I was still writing. Mr. Taylor. Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item twenty-five is the Historic Columbia Foundation, one vacancy for a citizen appointment and one vacancy for a council member appointment.
I have a motion to approve Gwen Thurmond to be council's choice to be on Historic Columbia. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll for that nomination?
Mr. Taylor. Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
She's, she is very on top of the ball.
No question.
Very thankful for her.
Item twenty-six, the Hospitality Tax Advisory Committee, there are currently six vacancies, three at-large and three restaurateurs.
So we, the motion would be to reappoint Hampton, David, Elsie, Bridges, and Kendrick, and then the new appointees would be Jonathan Tyler, Kelly Glenn, and Sharon Thompson.
And Hank Davis.
And Hank Davis, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed him at the top.
So move. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
You all are tracking right along. It's impressive, impressive. Item twenty-seven, the Planning Commission, there are currently two vacancies.
I'd like to move forth Steve Cook and Ryan Causey for the Planning Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
And finally, item twenty-eight, the Task Force to Prevent and End Homelessness.
I would defer to the chair for any nominations.
Well, we have a, a list of folks representing the neighborhood associations, as well as local homelessness experts and community advocates. Do you want me to read them one by one? You want me to do that? Okay. All right. Apologies. All right, so we have George Whitehead, Department of Probations and Patrol, Allison Farrell, John Wilkerson, Chief Holbrook, Steve Cook, Matt Kennel, Dr. Brett Cluse, Judge Amy McCullough, Jean Burns, and we're holding three more spots as we continue to seek diverse input from our community members.
Motion to approve that list?
Second.
Second. Mr. Mayor, we are going to hold the three positions open.
Correct. Yes, sir. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Uh, just one, one point is, we want to have a lot of different neighborhoods involved, so the intention behind Mr. John Wilkerson being there is not only for Elmwood, but for the downtown coalition of neighborhoods, because we recognize that that is an area that has been greatly impacted with persons experiencing homelessness. So if approved, we would hope that, you know, John can serve as the point of contact for all of our downtown neighborhoods.
And with that, I would add that hopefully we will, we can grab some folks. We need, we need some representation from the Harbison area, from the Garner's Ferry area, and others, because homelessness is, is an issue that has spread through all four corners of our neighborhood. It's not just one area, and we want to make sure that we're all working together to solve the issue and reduce the amount of homelessness that is in our community. Mr. Taylor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, and Dr. Bussles, let me, I just wanna thank y'all and congratulate, I think you've picked a really good, diverse mix of business people, neighborhoods, law enforcement, and, and I think it's the right type group to bring together to, to really address this issue, and, and I just wanna say, nice job in, in your selections, though.
With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Hall, and thank you, Ashley. Moving into a period of other matters, item twenty-nine, council is asked to approve the installation of one speed hump on Randolph Street as requested by the Public Works Department. The request has been approved.
So move.
Second. We have motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion, any concerns, celebration? Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Item thirty, council is asked to approve the installation of three speed humps on Howell Court as requested by the Public Works Department, and it's been approved by the Fire Department and Police Department.
So move.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a, a second. Is there any discussions, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Sir, Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bussles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. You should be receiving my city manager's report for today. Ended up being a little bit longer than what I expected. They're trying to revamp a little bit. Thank you for your feedback, your retreat, which y'all did a great job at the retreat, and we're looking forward to moving forward with, with all of your strategic initiatives. But of course, the report is meant for me to share some highlights of things going on, good things, in the city, and things that I think are worthy of the public's knowledge. And so one of those things, as you'll see in the report, is our twenty-two City of Columbia Job Fair that the city hosted at the Convention Center last week. And from all reports, it was a big success, and you'll see my note of congratulations to our staff. It was very well attended and professionally executed. The career fair on April twenty-sixth, twenty-two, we made it happen, and my understanding is that our attendees that came were both impressed and excited to apply for jobs on the spot. So I'm very happy that our city teams all across the city participated, and we had a hundred and twenty-five attendees who pre-registered, three hundred and fifty-seven event day registrations, so we had four hundred and eighty-two event day visitors ultimately, and twenty City of Columbia departments represented with approximately two hundred onsite interviews that occurred, which is significant, as you know, in the job market we're facing and the need across the city for qualified applicants. We were able to make an estimated eighty contingent offers of employment that day, so that was very successful and something that we would like to continue.
I, I would hope, Madam City Manager, that we could have another one of those sooner than later, because it does, I do think people did grasp and they did attend, and I think, you know, the more we can continue to reach out to folks and make it easier for them to engage with us, the more opportunities we'll have.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know we already set our date for next year, it sounds like we need to do it sooner than that, right?
Wouldn't be waiting.
Okay. Do you have a question, Ms. Herbert? I thought I saw your hand, I'm sorry.
No.
Our next item is the Columbia Water Customer Response Plan that all of you are familiar with. All of you have given feedback to us on doing that plan of response for Columbia Water to address our high volume of calls, the long wait times, the backlog with our road and yard restorations, water leaks, et cetera. So a few stats to update you. We have for the week of April twenty-fifth, April twenty-ninth, hot off the presses from Tiffany, and you all know Tiffany Latimer, our customer care administrator, but she shared some information, I'm sorry, I think I skipped a page. I'll come back to the second page, this was my third item, actually. But for the week of April twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth, we handled five hundred, three hundred and thirty-seven calls with an average wait time of two minutes and twenty-five seconds. To put it in perspective for the public, and you all know that is greatly improved, greatly improved from February, from, for example, when we were experiencing a wait time of eleven minutes and forty-two seconds on average. So we, and Tiffany put here for you all to see some analytics from February, March, and April. So you can see the trend has been downward every month, you know, with the call volume monthly averaging around twenty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-four calls, for example, in April. So that's a lot of calls that our center experiences, but we're getting those wait times down to two minutes and forty-six seconds in April, and now this past week, two minutes and twenty-five seconds. So we're making improvement, we're really happy about that. The customer care team, of course, was redeployed from night and weekend staff to work in the normal day shift and hire, and we hired a third-party call service partner to answer our after-hours urgent calls. So that ability to shift staff to the daytime when the majority of the calls are received and our personal team members can attend to our citizens and customers has been working. It's, it, yes.
No, I just want to say, this is, so this is really good information, and I use it in my neighborhood meetings to encourage people to start calling this number as opposed to my number.
Okay.
Well, no, 'cause I really want them to get the system working.
Absolutely.
So this information is good, because that was one of the biggest complaints I've probably had, so I'm really glad to hear.
Yes, ma'am. Please share, please share it.
Oh, I, I do, thank you.
Um, it, as you said, Councilwoman, this is significantly reducing our wait times, improving employee morale also, because who wants to feel overwhelmed, you know, with that high volume and trying to work to help citizens? It allows for an increased focus on resolving our billing adjustments and escalated billing issues. We also, as part of the customer water, the Columbia Water Customer Response Plan, have increased our usage of private contractors, something that we continue to talk about, and hope to fill those buckets, as y'all refer to it, to keep doing that, to supplement city staff, to address leaks, road and yard restorations, and new meter installations. That is beginning to reduce our work order backlog and improved, improve our responsiveness. As of April twenty-eighth, three thousand five hundred 28th, 3,575 work order backlog is, um, is what we have, which is down from 4,155 during the month of February. So we've resolved work orders, um, and doubled the amount that we've resolved from February to March. That's really significant, and we want to keep that going. And finally, we also have been working on some retention of our staff, our key staff in the field by providing after-hours on-duty pay, um, for them, an increased amount, and pay increases are being implemented that I had shared with you. In that same vein regarding recruitment and retention, we know that particularly as we're experiencing, unfortunately, increased gun violence in the city, we, um, are trying to work with Chief Holbrook to address a recruitment and retention plan that we think is really sustainable. And so I'm gonna defer to Mr. Duval because I think he wanted to present out, I have the same information here, but I'll allow you to do that, sir, during your committee report unless you want me to do it now. Um, but I wanted to share that we are moving forward with this plan, a pay plan, um, and implementing of, uh, funding of the plan, hopefully through our upcoming budget, um, on some level, that we are using, um, our consultant to help us address. And we presented that to your Public Safety Committee yesterday.
You go ahead and do it since you're on a roll, but let me give you an introduction that the Public Safety Committee met yesterday and, and took up the topic that the city manager will, will review with you. We all agreed that we're in a different world now as far as employment and, and dealing with employees, and we needed to take some of these, uh, make some of these changes. Uh, what, what is not contained in the report that the city manager is gonna review with you is we also went back and reviewed what the city has done, uh, since, uh, 2016, when we got a brand-new police chief who used to be around the whole area. Uh, but we have made significant efforts over the, since 2016 to get our pay scales up so that we would not be poached on by agencies that steal our well-trained offices. And now we're proposing this, and city manager, if you will go through that.
Yes, sir. Thank you for saying that, um, Councilman Duval. We have, and we did share with this, this Public Safety Committee, various increases over time, you know, since back since 2015 or 2016. And those were, you know, the one-time increases trying to get our department in, on par, uh, potentially with neighboring, uh, agencies. But, you know, you're always chasing salaries. I think what we're proposing now is more of a career pathway for the officers so that they will be able to see through this plan the potential, if they want to continue to make this their career, and that's what we want them to do. Um, not just the ability to be promoted and move vertically, but to move horizontally through the pay scales and be able to project out potentially for years to come where they would stand with the City of Columbia as the ought-to-be premier agency we think it is. We've just got to address some things that are going on, um, nationwide, really, with hiring and recruitment and retention. And so to continue to have that premier law enforcement department in the state as the capital city, the city leadership is recommending the following: implementation and funding of the final compensation plan recommended by Evergreen Consultants, an outside firm, to help the city address the challenge of recruiting and retaining quality staff. The plan will include creating a separate pay plan for the Columbia Police Department based on being competitive with other law enforcement organizations in the region and the state, providing a system that has wider pay bands and allows more room for progression of pay for experience without having to be promoted. Implementing this step pay plan that would allow officers to receive pay increases every step or year and allow us to hire sworn staff from other agencies by offering salaries that are reflective of the experience. And so that is really key, the pay plan piece. But Chief Holbrook would tell you it's not just about the pay, of course. It's about the work-life balance of our officers. It's about the, uh, take-home car program that we hope to fully fund, to provide our vehicle, more vehicles to our officers, um, hiring an officer wellness coordinator to improve the staff's physical fitness. Um, I would love to implement some programs for their mental health to make sure that they are able on a daily basis to go talk and, you know, reflect and release anything they may need to do, them and their families, to assess the Columbia Police Department facility needs.
Most important.
Yes, sir. And to perform a regional realignment and staffing assessment that the chief thinks is critical. So those are the highlights. You'll be hearing more. Um, and I really want to thank the Public Safety Committee for listening to us, giving us some feedback yesterday. And we'll be bringing you more information as we go through the budget.
Ms. Wilson, I, I really do want to emphasize the mental health piece of this. Uh, talking to a lot of the officers, that's a piece that's really needed. I mean, these guys carry a lot on their shoulders, and if you've had the opportunity to be in the field with them, the compassion and everything that they put out there and the strong force, but they also need to release that. The other piece I want to make sure that we don't forget about is training. Training is just as important. As we've saw, we had an opportunity to go to Charlotte and visit with, uh, the, see the police training that they have there, but also talk to some of the officers and the head of the training and even with the chief of police. And, and I think training is one of the key elements that fits right into with what you're doing that is what would be very helpful for us in retention and recruitment.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more.
Yes, sir.
Let me just make one observation. You all, what you, what you're reporting to us sort of represents one avenue of public safety currently. What are we going to do?
This is just about the officers.
You're just talking about the other piece?
This is just about-
The other piece. What I want to ask is that the other piece will come later?
Yeah.
Yes. All right. I just want to make sure we don't get-
Bite one, one part of the apple at, at a time.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I'm gonna make sure we got an apple. And that, uh, if we bite, we need to make sure we bite exclusively, not only on the city side.
Yeah.
Because it's much needed, but on the other side also. All right.
We're gonna give them another turnout suit.
Well, Allison-
I just don't want to leave that out.
Uh, we've already taken care of it.
I just wanted to add that we did talk about the Office of Gun Violence Prevention that'll be coming out of the mayor's office to, to deal with the other side.
All right.
Uh, but that's still in development.
Good.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Taylor?
I mean, I just want to say, it was an excellent, excellent public safety meeting, and, and I want the people of Columbia to know that what, what I heard in the room was that there is a commitment from the staff and council to ensure that Columbia, the capital city of South Carolina, has the finest police force in the state. And, uh, really appreciate Chief Holbrook's comments at that meeting yesterday about the studies on how we might, uh, you know, how you mentioned, and how we might look at different areas of service and things like that. I, I just want, I want the people of Columbia to know that we are all committed in these tough times that we live in to make sure, to make sure that, that, that we have a safe place to live because public safety is the cornerstone of prosperity. And, and that's, we're gonna continue with our commitment on that. And I thank you for everything you're doing on that. And Chief, thank you too.
Thank you, sir.
This is just one, one part of the puzzle. So we're, we're-
I'm glad.
We, we are continuing to move forward in all aspects. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And some additional initiatives that we're showing improvements upon involve our new zoning and overlay, um, and some analytics related to our new Unified Development Ordinance that was, that went into effect August 30th of 2021. We're seeing positive results with regard to streamlining development review. I thought these numbers were really, um, instructive of what happens when you do some streamlining because it really does impact the citizens we serve and our business owners and folks trying to do business in the city. As a case in point, there's been a significant decrease in the number of cases required to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so again, that's, um, really key for someone who's trying to get something done, right? They don't have to wait for the next meeting and all that goes along with, with going, um, to, to one of those land use boards. So for the period since our adoption of the, you know, of the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, which is September 2021 through April of 2022, there have been 32 cases to include two months where no cases were heard at all. For the same period prior to adoption, there had been 82 cases for, so that's showing us a total reduction in cases of 60%. And that was worth reporting on, I think. Staff is continuing to monitor the implementation of the code for additional amendments, and you've got some, um, analytics there for you to look at, some data on the type of, uh, hearings, whether it's special exceptions, says, variances, rehearings, and so forth. But that, that reduction is shown for you. And of course, um, we are always, as a municipality, having to adhere to, um, changes in state law that might impact what we may be doing and policies that we may, we might have. Of course, uh, the previously seated council and this council have been very forward-thinking with, uh, regard to COVID-19 protocols and procedures. And we had initiated the mandatory COVID-19 vaccination policy. On April 25th, however, of this year, Governor McMaster signed legislation that requires the city to make a change in our policy related to COVID-19, Bill H. 3126, which is the Vaccination Mandates of Employers and Public Accommodations Bill, prohibits cities from implementing policies mandating COVID-19 vaccinations and limits routine COVID-19 testing. So we have to lift our mandatory COVID-19 vaccination policy, and we have done that effective immediately. So I just wanted to be clear about that. Um, and I think you have before you what all that means, but it's essentially what it says, that we have to lift our policy. And we have, um, begun to do that. It does not mean that we will not still ensure, because I'm very proud of the measures we've taken to provide a safe work environment for our employees. And so we will continue to ensure that it is safe and ensure that our, um, employees adhere to safety measures accordingly. There is a DOE, a Department of Energy pilot program for Columbia, the community's local energy action program, the LEAP, LEAP program. And Columbia's been chosen for the Department of Energy's community's local energy action program. After we applied for the pilot in December of 2021, it will help create a roadmap for 100% renewable energy with a focus on developing clean energy programs and addressing energy burden for low-income renters in our city and multifamily housing. And so this is really neat. It's more of a technical assistance type opportunity, and, um, we're really proud of Mary Pat Baldoff in our Office of Sustainability. It works with Robert Anderson and Public Works, um, who took this on and applied, and we were awarded. So that's really exciting. Um, there's several partners in the proposal like Homeless No More and TN Development Corporation, our CPAC, uh, Climate Protection Action Committee, and the Sierra Club. But we'll take the lead, and we will work with those other entities as we are working towards, uh, the city's ready for 100 renewable energy goal. And finally, you've already done this. Like I said, you all are quite impressive today with all the appointments that you made. And I wanted to share some, uh, feedback from Ashley that since the implementation of match board, we've seen a significant increase in applications for advertised boards and commissions. And on average, we would, used to receive about five to 10 applications per board and no more than 30 applications overall, um, when we were really trying to seek qualified candidates. But now, we've received 116 applications from March 22nd to April 30th, which is a big increase. Uh, COLA today also posted about the boards and commissions process, which is accounting for about, we think, 3.5% of the incoming applications. We anticipate an ongoing interest in serving on City of Columbia boards and commissions. And as the staff, we will continue to implement new strategies to attract and retain citizens who are qualified to serve. And mostly, we just want to say thank you to each one of you because y'all have been doing it. I've seen and heard how you're posting and seeking candidates that are qualified. So thank you to our mayor and members of city council for your continued support, forethought, and citizen recommendations. And that's my report. And please share anything in it or ask me if you need any information.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam City Manager?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I had one more, but go ahead, Councilman.
I was just gonna say, if, if you would ask Ashley to send us a list of the ones we appointed today, it was, it was a lot of people. And I'd like to know.
Yes, sir.
What, what I, oh, I see.
Absolutely. And I know that Ms. Erica will be having it always in her minutes as well. I will use, it may not be in my report, which is why I was, I'm getting used to my, how I'm gonna do this. But I do want to take this opportunity at times to recognize staff who are so well-deserved, won't be necessarily in the written report. And I'm bringing back a staff member that I think Mayor Rickman told us we should have had, Demetrius here last time, Demetrius Romp, who is our Director of Safety and Risk Management. I'm gonna ask Demetrius to come up and Pam to come up with him as he reports up to her because we want to actually give him the award that I told you about. Um, last meeting, he was awarded the South Carolina Public Management Association's Risk Professional of the Year Award, and it aims to raise the profile and recognition of an individual who exemplifies excellence, innovation, and commitment to the risk and safety management field and the outstanding programs the honorary has implemented within our organization. I told you last time about those numbers, and they are much improved. Um, we talked about our workers' compensation claims dropping 48%, and so a continued downward trend in cost for claims and such. So that's really a big deal for the city, and we're proud of Demetrius. And I'd like for them to come up if they would and receive the award. Mayor, if you could take a picture with them, that would be great. Thank you, Demetrius.
Justin, I would rest up.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for indulging me, and we will move now into your city council committee referrals, reports, and new business.
Lot of activity, so I'm assuming we're gonna get some reports here.
Public safety is already reported via the city manager.
Okay.
Mr. Duval, I would like to add one thing to the, to the report that I think is, is great news for the city, and that was the city manager and the police chief's report on our pathways program.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, that the interviews, first round of interviews are happening this week. This, it will input five mental health professionals into our police department to respond to homeless on the street and, and mental health crisis. I think it's a, an absolutely fantastic program, and I think it's one that, that all across Columbia will be very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. That was a good addition.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question about the, uh, heat map that was announced in the last couple of weeks. Is that part of the LEAP, uh, grant?
The what, sir?
Uh, that, they're gonna map the City of Columbia for, um, heat sources?
I may have missed that myself.
No, that is a, um, University of South Carolina grant that would have us as a stakeholder where they would present the results to us, um, in terms of where there needs to be more shade, um, you know, where there could be more trees and beautification to help with the long-term goal of making our community more green and sustainable. So, uh, we had somebody reach out to us from the university to share that news. It's exciting, um, to, to get that data. But unfortunately, no, not city-led, university-led.
Thank you, Dr. Bustles.
We will be able to use the data of that.
Yeah, sounds interesting.
Hopefully, the university will follow step of the city and continue to improve because I know they're, they're a little behind us, and so maybe this will give them a little nudge as well.
Any other-
Do we have any other committee referrals, reports?
The Administrative Policy Committee met, and, uh, there were three-
The Administrative Policy Committee met, and there were three substantive items discussed, and we have not, we don't have final recommendations yet, but at our next, next meeting is scheduled for, I think, the nineteenth, the nineteenth, seventeenth, I'm sorry. At our next council meeting, after that meeting, we will have something substantive to offer.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the Tax Modernization Committee met at ten o'clock this morning. We had public comments. I think it was probably the most, I've ever seen this room filled with private business folks. I think great cases were made and great progress was made. And, and I think our next meeting will be on May the nineteenth at two o'clock in the afternoon, and we should be prepared to submit the final recommendation, recommendations to, to you to take, to form the next level of committee for, see how we implement it.
I thought it was a great turnout as well today. Also, I have to, you know, recognize too that we had Stephen Gilchrist, the head of the African-American Chamber in here, talking about how, how the taxes affected the nine-hundred minority-owned businesses in this community, but then statewide, how it has effect. And the two things that they surveyed was access to capital and high taxes that are affecting growth. So thought it was great to have him part of that. And, and as we continue to talk about the modernization, about how it affects all the non-owner-occupied properties, and people forget that's renters, that's folks in apartment complexes, and, and the majority of our houses in our community are rented. So it does affect when three-and-a-half months' worth of collection is going to property tax. So as we levelize that, when we talk about affordability, we talk about investment, we talk about growth, this all plays a real key role, and we're seeing it across our community and, and every, every neighborhood. So it was a really good meeting.
Community and Economic Development Committee met today as well. We'll submit a more formal, I think, written, written report for the next council meeting. But let me just say, it was, kind of went hand-in-hand with the tax committee. The city staff is really working hard to come up with, with ways that make it easier for small businesses to start and be successful in Columbia. I think they'll have a, an announcement on some staff packages that we, we can implement sometime this month, and we're examining some other things. And then on the community development side, we heard from, from Ms. Haed on, on what their plans are for, for fiscal twenty-three, how the goal is to wrap up the flood programs during fiscal, actually between now and, I think, January. And, and like I said, we'll submit a more formal deal, but we had a very, very long and informative meeting this afternoon. So thank you, sir.
Are there any more updates or referrals?
Mr. Taylor, in that report that was given by Ms. Haed, did we talk about the progress in terms of those families that are still displaced because of the flood?
Yes, sir. She, she basically informed the committee. We'll, we'll include the slides. As a matter of fact, we'll include those with our report. And where they intend all the displaced, that program should be finished this year, calendar year twenty-two. So that's where, where we are at. Okay, thank you.
Before we go to public input, I just wanted to put this out. It is Small Business Week, and I wanted to put out, next Thursday, the Wiley Kennedy Foundation is hosting a Small Business Expo, is the best way to describe it, out at the Wiley Kennedy Family Center at ten-thirty-seven Eastman Street in Columbia. That's two-nine-two-zero-three, from six to eight. They're going to be, if you want to, if you're a small business owner thinking about starting a business, this meeting's for you. Free service is available. Meet small business professionals assist you. And I can tell you that the Wiley Kennedy Foundation is really, really pushing to create growth in one of our gateways, and I hope, if you have an opportunity to attend, that you will. Just wanted to bring that attention before we moved on to public input. Yes, ma'am.
Any public input from those in attendance or listening in?
We have Ms. Christie Savage. She has signed up to speak. All right, she has changed her mind.
We must have satisfied her inquiries. Is there anybody else that would like to speak this afternoon on any subject? Ms. Wiley, we heard from you earlier. It's always good to see you here. Uh, we, well, that part I believe. Yes, ma'am. But you're welcome to speak if you've got something that can't, is sitting on your heart, you can't wait to get off of it. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy.
Um, but thank you so much, Mayor Rickman, for your support about our, that we're having. I'm Gwendolyn Singletary. I'm the Executive Director of the Wiley Kennedy Foundation, and I'm also the President of United Alliance of North Columbia Neighborhoods, which includes neighborhood associations, businesses, churches, and nonprofits. We're doing quite a few things, and Mayor Rickman came out, and Dr. Bustles came out, and Tina, we were cleaning up the buildup last Saturday, which was a great event in terms of cleaning our community up and taking it back. And to go through that, our next stage of our work toward that end is our Small Business Forum that we're having, because we believe economic development is important for us, housing is important for, and social education. In our area, two-nine-two-zero-three, has a particular area, so specific issues that are facing the area more importantly than some other areas. And to that end, we are also going to have on the twenty-fourth, which is a Tuesday, and these, all the things are coming out of our rally. We want to make sure that people know we didn't have a rally, they have a rally. We have a rally with steps to get us back in track. And so Sheriff Holbrook, Chief Holbrook and Sheriff Lot will be there on the twenty-fourth, on that Tuesday, for Community and Law Enforcement Roundtable to discuss how we work better, how we be more impactful. Now, this is not a situation to come and point fingers or complain about anything you've had issues with. If you do have those issues, you can talk about it another time. But in this session, we'll talk about plans to go forward, and I think that's important, that we talk about that, and we have to continue to work together. And I have to say, law enforcement in the city and county have been more and more supportive to us. We have meetings, we have events there, there to help us. In fact, they can't, your, your police department helped us clean up. They were out there picking up and cleaning up as well. So I want to see, I'll talk about that as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Singletary. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak or sign up? Do we have any voicemails or emails that we need to address, Madam Clerk? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium. Are you here to tell me you found my package?
I did not find your package. It's lost forever. My name is Jared Johnson, for the record. Thank you, Madam City Manager. I know it's our first time being leg in the flesh, for sure. This question is more so a beast, because I don't know that much about it, so it's based on a little bit of my ignorance, but is city council taking steps to make sure that any municipal revenue cuts or tax cuts will also benefit those who actually rent? Because I know there's a huge tax burden on business owners and people who own large pieces of property like homes.
That's actually the, the whole plan of this modernization is not, it's not about the homeowner, it's about the non-owner-occupied, which is the commercial and the renters. That's what we're targeting to levelize and bring it down to equal to the homeowners, because as you know, we're forty-eight percent more expensive than Charleston and thirty-eight percent more than Greenville. So we're trying to levelize that thing so that the small businesses, the renters, and the, and the non-homeowners are at equal level, so they see that benefit, because that affects all the way across our city.
Right, but just to be clear, just from my understanding, the plan in place, I'm sure it's still developing, but there is a plan in place to make sure the actual renter within the home that's owned by someone that benefits from the tax cut?
Absolutely, because that'll allow the owners of those properties to reinvest, because right now, it used to be, and we had somebody testify today, that it used to be one month's worth of rent, now it's three-and-a-half months' worth of rent, and that's driving up the costs of that rental. And I think one of the things that we hope to see is that more, more disclosure is done in the future, so that people know exactly what, what's being, what they're paying for in their rent.
Last question, just within that same realm. Is that being communicated, you know, while you research, as you roll out the plan and implement it, that homeowners, like, hey, you know, we want this to benefit renters? Because is it a guarantee that, for example, I rent in my home, that my owner, because they have lower taxes, is there a guarantee that I'll have a lower rent, or they won't go up on rent?
Well, we're communicating with everyone. Obviously, the goal is to reduce it, to create more affordability in our, in our community, and that's what's, I mean, this, this will really help. So can I guarantee that each one of these guys or gals will do that? No, our intention is to make sure that they understand the reason we're, we're trying to levelize the playing field, to make it more affordable, and that we can have more options in investment as well. So you will have more choices of where you live.
Well, thank you for that information.
And hopefully, we can help you get to homeownership and not be a renter, because that's really the goal at the end of the day.
I might not buy in Columbia, but no, you know, you never know. You never know.
You're not going to buy in Columbia? What?
I might purchase a house in Florence. You never know.
He will. He's going to move to Irwin. We're going to listen to him.
For sure. But no, thank you for that information. But last little point, too, if that can be like part of the, the push, the actual campaign, like that way, early on, you're reinforcing that, hey, like, this will benefit you as a property owner, but our main goal is to make it, you know, equitable for everyone, not just those who traditionally have owned property and always get, you know, benefits.
Well, that's why I'm trying to encourage that investment, so we have more options.
For sure.
Because, you know, we have a lot of empty lots, and we've lost a, a part of our population, and part of it has been because of the cost to live, and we've got to change that, because we want to make sure that we keep our community diverse.
I look forward to seeing what you get done.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Well, Jared, one of the things that I think is critically important, and your questions are important, but please understand that we are still in the process of forming and framing this new tax modernization. And I think it's going to be, it's going, I really think it's going to be an advantage to those who are homeowners and renters. So working out all of the specifics, we hadn't done all of that yet. We're on a real good road, but we hadn't got there yet. And when that road completes, that's when we become very transparent in making sure that communities know exactly what's going on. Thank you, sir.
Always thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Could you pull your mic down, sir?
Just so that people listening at home can hear you.
Yes, my name is Doreen Skelton, and I often come to these meetings. I'm very concerned about getting the homeless off the streets. As you all know, I've talked to some of the city council members and city, uh, city manager. And I want to know, what is it that I can do to help the city move forward in helping the homeless get off the streets? I see them on the streets every day. I saw a gentleman over in my area, which is near the Kilborn area, and I sent a city councilwoman a picture of it, and I sent it to the mayor. And it made me really sad that the man had, I asked him, I said, why are you on the street? He said, because I failed. I said, who did you fail? I didn't ask him that, but I'm like, who did he fail? Why does people have to be on the streets? What can we do? What can I do? I'm, I'm here to help. I'm retired. I'd be glad to do whatever it is to help these people get off the streets. So you all have my information. Let's move forward in that. You know, I was told that June the first, we're going to see about getting the committee together, but that's kind of far down the road. What can we do? Like, starting like yesterday?
Well, ma'am, I will say, you know, obviously, we put a committee together to study it. One of the things we've also done is looked at, who are all the providers, so that we can create a book of understanding who all the providers are and who's providing what service. Part of that allows us to bring people together, because obviously, what we're doing right now isn't working very well, because we've seen that population grow. Some of it has to do with mental health, some of it has to do with addiction, some of it has to do with people who just don't want to be in a home or a shelter. So we're dealing with multiple facets. I will tell you, our commitment as an entire council, Dr. Bustles is heading up, the, the Homeless Task Force is to get people out of the streets, get them into the wraparound services, or help them get to where their support system is, whatever we need to do to make a difference. We have a commitment. It's just not going to happen overnight. But I applaud your compassion, applaud your willingness to help, and hopefully, we can find a role for you to help us achieve that goal, to reduce this homelessness. You know, I wish we could say we could eliminate it, but the reality of that is homelessness has been around for a long, long time. But our goal is to reduce it and make sure that we have the ability to take care of the folks who need it, to make sure they get to the wraparound services they need, and also engage. But we want to make sure that, that all of our community partners also have the same goals and that they have accountability, because we all need to be held accountable to make sure that we are making a difference. So I, I'll give you that commitment. I wish I had something I could tell you to do right now, but I don't.
Ms. Skelton, I do want to share, the first time we met, you shared some of your ideas about tiny homes and, you know, bedding and, and access to beds for our persons experiencing homelessness, particularly those that may congregate in Findlay Park. So I did want to share with you that as we are getting the task force together, know that there's going to be plenty of opportunities to participate. Just, the task force itself is just one part of it. We're going to have subject matter expert, community experts, providers come and comment on the final plan. We want to make sure it's something that is community-led, but is also evidence-based. So one of the things I have been doing is really trying to understand the number of beds that are available in our city, and if that, those beds are meeting the demands of those experiencing homelessness. Just before this meeting, I met with our public defender of Richland County, as well as a homeless advocate and provider, to learn a little bit more about why people don't engage in services, and what are some policies that are in place that may not actually be doing what they're intending, which is to help people that are experiencing this hardship. And so we spent about an hour and a half talking through some of the local policies that could be hindering some of our efforts. But then we also thought about our hopes and dreams in terms of what we'd like to do to ensure that homelessness doesn't happen moving forward in our community. And then in addition to that, we've continued to meet with those who've been in this space, like Homeless No More, Mercy, some of our researchers that exclusively work on homelessness to understand the root cause. Because what we don't want to do is to just move the problem somewhere else, right? Because these are our citizens, these are our neighbors. We want to ensure that we're dealing with them in a compassionate way, but also recognizing that this is something that is very imminent, and it's something that needs to be addressed very soon. So when you shared the idea of the tiny homes, I also reached out to someone in Portland, Oregon, who has found success in creating those tinier homes and looking at different affordable housing options, because we know that housing is a key component of homelessness. So I want you to hear that, the feedback that you've provided, including the pictures that you've shared, is something that I don't take lightly, and it's something that I've continued to keep close to me as we do a lot of the work behind the scenes before we get to that committee phase, because I want to be very intentional and make sure we have results after this report is released. So happy to talk with you more, but would love to get you engaged with helping us with some of those report strategies and ideas that you may have.
Also, zoning is an issue here in Columbia, zoning. I try myself to, like I said, I'm retired, and I'm on a fixed income. And if my mortgage keeps going up, one day I'll be homeless. But zoning does not allow for you to have two kitchens, two baths. It's like a multi, it becomes a multifamily dwelling if you allow someone else to live in your home. So I'm bringing this up because I have called zoning, because I was interested in opening my home up, one part of my home, to help someone get off the streets. And they told me that you can't do that, because they don't allow two kitchens, two bathrooms, which I have two bathrooms already. And there's other ways to have two kitchens without actually having stoves and things like that, so. But like I said, zoning, we really need to have zoning changed, to allow people like myself or other people that need second income and don't want to go out and work, to have other people come live in other people come live in their homes. Of course, I would not charge the people a lot, because I realize that people don't have money. A lot of people don't have the money to pay for rent and their medical expenses and food and clothing and other things that they would need. So I would be very reasonable with that, but we really need to look at zoning and helping some of the people get off the streets, okay?
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else? Not seeing anybody?
Don't encourage them.
Mr. DeVal?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We go into executive session for discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements pursuant to SE Code 30-4-782, Farah Road property, discussion of employment of an employee pursuant to SE Code 30-4-781, Columbia Police Department Municipal Court Judges.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the roll?
Mr. Taylor, Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.